Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the North Kingstown School Committee. Today is Monday, August 30th, 2010. Tonight is a business meeting. Again, we apologize for the late start. Please, please join us and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Mrs. Jarrow, roll call, please.
Linda Avanzato?
Here.
Mel Boyd Benson?
Here.
April Brunel?
Here.
Larry Cerisi?
Here.
Kimberly Page?
Here.
Douglas Rock?
Richard Welch?
Here.
Julia Hell?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarrow. Calendars, please.
August 31st is the first day of school for all staff. September 1st is the first day of school for all students K through 12. September 6th is Labor Day. There'll be no school and all school offices are closed. Thursday, September 9th, there's no school due to Rasha Shauna. Friday, September 10th is a policy subcommittee meeting, 9:00 a.m., Central Administration Building. September 13th, there's a CILAC meeting, 7:00 p.m., Central Administration Building. September 14th, there's no school due to Primary Day. There's also a school committee work session, 7:00 p.m., North Kingstown High School. And September 28th is a school committee business meeting, 7:00 p.m., North Kingstown High School.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarrow. Are there any additions for the calendar at this time from committee members or administration? Thank you. Our first agenda item this evening is a presentation on potential future uses of Davisville Elementary School. And I will defer to Dr. Thornton at this time.
Hello and good evening. Before we start, if I could take you back a few months, going back to last spring, as you recall, we did close Davisville Elementary. And at that time, the school committee truly had a genuine interest in looking at future uses for the building for both district and community. From that point, I actually talked to Donna Thompson, my Title I Cozy Director, to look at, what could we do and who's out there to research this? From that, Donna was able to use some grant funds and our Cozy funds to acquire Barbara Jackson to come to us tonight to really talk about, you know, how this could look. What's one possible vision of this Davisville L space? And as far as Barbara Jackson's introduction, it's, um, you, at the committee, have her bio. And as you can see, it's quite impressive and quite lengthy. I'll give you some of the highlights, if I could. Barbara brings 25 years of management and consulting experience to the table. She's currently the CEO of, and founder of, the Three Steps Network. Barbara is the former Budget Director for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. She managed over a $16 billion budget. Prior to that, Barbara also served as the First Deputy Commissioner of the New York City Department of Ports and Trade. And prior to that, as the Vice President of Finance and Budget for the New Jersey Transit Authority. So Barbara truly brings a great deal of experience to the table. And I could go on longer about Barbara, but I'll stop there and turn it over to Barbara. Ms. Jackson, please.
Thank you very much, Dr. Thornton. Thank you to the committee for letting Cozy present this proposal for the use of the Davisville Elementary School. I'm gonna try to make the technology work.
Just for committee members, the PowerPoint presentation that she's presenting is in your packages. The hot copy is in your packages, yes.
Well, thank you. When, uh, when the Cozy team and I were working, we had three fundamental goals that we wanted to achieve when we looked at whatever possibilities could be brought into the Davisville Elementary School. So let me tell you what they were from where we go. They were to obtain a physical situation that enables Cozy and the school department to grow programs, to grow partnerships, and to build sustainable revenue. To build sustainable revenue, um, because the Cozy revenue is diminishing. Is it better over here?
Yeah.
So somebody's gonna need to push the buttons on that side. This is really tricky. Thank you. The second goal that we had, so the first one was sustainable revenue and growing public-private partnerships for Cozy. And that's a really important part of the program that we're going to be presenting tonight. The second goal that we had was to maintain DES in a sustainable fashion so that it could be turned back into a school, if that's what's necessary. So we're not going to do anything to modify that building, even though it might be, in the short run, easier for us to accomplish the first goal. Because we realize that the school needs to be a school until a decision is made that it's never gonna be a school again. And that's not something that's on the table right now. The third goal is to develop a knowledge community at that facility. So while there may be many different things that you could do with that building, the particular goal here is to build a public-private partnership that builds a knowledge community using that building. And so what does that mean? What that means is, we will do things like adult education, both traditional and non-traditional adult education. We will do things like asking trainers, excuse me, to locate their business facilities in that building. Use classroom space, use the computer classroom space, use the auditorium space, all for the purpose of expanding the availability of knowledge, of training, of professional development in the town of North Kingstown for the businesses that are here, for the citizens that are here, and for businesses that we hope to attract here because we have our own knowledge community going in Davisville Elementary School. The other, the other thing that that allows us to do is it allows us to focuses, focus on other creative uses of auxiliary systems at that school. By which I mean, there is a fabulous fenced-in field. I mean, just an incre, for those, Davisville community, you know what I'm talking about. There's this incredible field out there in front of the, one of the children's playgrounds that we can imagine might become a community garden. Now, you can have a community garden in a lot of different places. Our goal would be to have a community garden supported inside by training about agriculture, by training with, about where does food come from? How, how do you grow it? Where do you, how do you do it organically so you don't have to apply it with a lot of chemicals? And really, use the facility to educate people in as many different ways as we possibly can. So that's, that's what we imagine happening there. Because we can imagine so many different partnerships with non-traditional people in, in all sorts of endeavors, we also know that there's a lot of potential new grants out there that Cozy can't, uh, apply for right now. One, because they don't have the space, and two, because they don't have these types of partnerships in place. So, if we, if we could look at the big picture slide, what we know is that right now, where we are today, the Davisville Elementary School is going to be closed for classroom activities this year. And we would all like to see if there's a way to avoid that. The problem is, it costs the town money to mothball the school. The limit on the opportunities for Cozy cannot, and the school department, cannot be overstated. They're just living in closets, literally, right now. And that's not a way that we can attract new funding. There is no current facility on the west side of the bay where we can say to a corporation, "Come, have your meeting here." There are a few hotels around, they're very expensive. But there is no place where we can do plug-and-play. I'm, I'm, I do this for a living. When I walk into a building, I take my computer, I give, give the guy the flash drive, and I don't have to do anything. I have to provide me. I have to provide my intellectual property. To get people to come and do that type of training, you have to provide them with some fundamental stuff. That does not exist over here. It does on the other side of the bay. It doesn't over here. So if we want to, as a town, compete, if we want to attract more businesses here, we have to, we have to rethink a little bit about what we're offering. And so, we're not asking the town to pay for that. But what we are hoping is that we can attract enough trainers, enough core businesses to support that type of infrastructure in this building that we are going to use for a few years until a decision is made about what its future is. So that's the big picture. The proposal is a four-in-one win. Our, our goal would be to set up some kind of a nonprofit, not a 501(c)(3), but a nonprofit corporation. We have to get ourselves legally established, because this is not gonna be the school department running this, even though they're gonna run it in partnership. But there will be a formal entity. That new corporation, we've titled it Zip Center, because there's sort of no meaning to zip, so it can't really offend anyone until we figure out what to call it. So it's called Zip Center, is going to reposition the Davisville Elementary School. And we are going to go out and market this space. It's gonna solve four key problems if we're successful. It will keep the building open and vibrant. It will provide opportunity for adult education. It will provide affordable office startup for businesses that are in this new media and knowledge education. And it's going to provide this fully digital meeting space. The, I think we kind of beat this horse to death, but let's do it one more time. Our goal is to preserve the Davisville Elementary School in a fiscally and socially responsible fashion and to expand community access to that building. We want to expand educational program. We want to create a knowledge district in North Kingstown. We want to create pay-per-use classrooms and meeting space. I can tell you, I was looking for a meeting space for Wednesday. I am nowhere near South County for that meeting space. That's how desperate the need for pay-per-use meeting space is. And the meeting space that I'm going into does not have Wi-Fi, which this building does. The proposed arrangement is to have a two-year lease with a three-year renewal. That doesn't mean that if we decided in year four it needed to be a school, that's okay. We can move. Because we're not going to be putting any kind of significant capital into that building to switch it in terms of its usage. Can't be a one-year lease, because we can't get businesses to locate their offices if they only have a 12-year month lease. That just, that doesn't work for businesses. And there is some, there is some things that we're going to have to do to that building. We have to put security in. We have to invest in some digital media. I mean, we have to do some things. So we need to, we need to be able to be planful about this approach. But we have to also realize that the plan may be to turn it back into an elementary school. And so, and so we will honor that commitment. This is what it looks like today. There's just numbers on, on rooms, if I've offended anybody, because it's, a room is named after some important person. That was not intentional, they're just numbers so that we can call them out. This is what we hope it will look like, if we could turn the slide. We will hopefully have the food bank in there. We will have, when we called them hotels, what that means is, we're, we're mindful that getting a business to locate into a 1,200-square-foot space for the types of businesses that we're talking about, which are very small micro-businesses, is, they don't need 1,000 square feet. They don't need 800 square feet. So we're gonna put them in there together. And we know that that works in other places. So we may have, uh, we may have a couple businesses located in what is currently the third-grade classroom. As long as they're collaborative, as long as they know each other, that's okay. They're, they're happy to be there. And small micro-businesses, they're not there 24/7 anyway. They're out on the road, getting new business. So there's a lot of dead time where those offices won't even be occupied by human beings. And it will be rare to have all two or three businesses in the same room at the same time. So what we imagine is that there will be businesses, there will be room for Cozy to expand their programs. There will be a minimum of two classrooms and a computer room at full build-out. There will be a, what we're calling pay-per, PPU stands for pay-per-use digital space in the auditorium. That does not rule out theater, but it is intended for meetings like this one, where hopefully the technology will be easy to use. Yeah. There's a, that we're gonna maintain the kitchen. For those of you that have been there, you know, it's not a, it's not a full-service kitchen, but we can use that kitchen to do things with the food bank. We can use that kitchen to do family meals. We've talked to a couple of businesses in town who are culinary-type of businesses, who have asked if they could bring chefs in to do cooking demonstrations, and also would like to do cooking on a budget, cooking on the menu of the week for specials at the supermarket type of thing. So we have a broad variety of programs that people have approached us about. We have smaller pay-per-use meeting rooms planned for what is currently, I believe, the staff lounge. And one of the things that we'd like to explore is to create a fitness hotel where we can make use of the very deluxe adult gymnasium that is outside. And so we're talking to some people from the military who have trainers that like to go out into community and do community challenges. So we're, we're looking into some options, none of which we can really explore seriously until and unless we get permission to do this. So we don't have agreements with anyone. But people have approached us. So that's what we mean by fitness hotel. We need to see, we, we will go, I will go, after we should be so lucky to get permission, to see Keith Stokes and ask him about bringing some state partners down here for what we call the State Hotel. We could imagine there's a variety of different services that have already expressed an interest about being in North Kingstown and have no place to go. So, in brief, that's the presentation, besides what we hope to do outside, which is community gardens and the adult fitness course. We imagine that there is a phasing to this. It's not all gonna happen at once. We have a sort of 34-month window to try to get this all rented up. And if we get permission to move forward, we will be speaking with Dr. Thornton about what those arrangements might be. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Before we move to committee members for questions and comments for you regarding the presentation, I just want to remind the community that there is a sign-up sheet right up front here. For those of you who would like to comment or speak during Citizens' Comments, which we'll be moving to probably very shortly, right after committee members have an opportunity to, for Q and A on the presentation that Ms. Jackson just gave. So again, if you'd like to speak during Citizens' Comment, Public Comment, please sign the sign-up sheet, which is located down front. We'll be moving to that in about five minutes, five or 10 minutes. Are there any questions or comments from committee members regarding the presentation by Ms. Jackson? Okay, I, I don't mind opening up with, with more of a comment than a question. And then we can certainly continue from there. I think, from the, from my view, as a school committee member, I think, as you mentioned during your presentation, and as we've, we've previously discussed, and as I've previously said, I look to continue to provide opportunities for the school district and the community at Davisville Elementary School, and be able to generate some type of rental fees to offset any additional cost to the school district and thus the taxpayers. I think, as we all know, it's a, an elementary school that's nestled into a neighborhood, a community. So, I think the structure of the building is in great shape. I know there's been recent investments into the structure of the building in some years past. And I just think that there's some great opportunities there for the community and for the school district to utilize that facility in ways that the, the school district needs, and also offer opportunities for the community to utilize that facility, too. Certainly not our intent or wish to board up the building or anything of that nature. I think it's a great facility and a great community, and I look forward and hope we can continue to offer that space to the community and the school district, so. Are there any questions or comments from committee members? I know Dr. Thornton would like to say a few words before we close this out as well. But I'd like to give committee members an opportunity to ask any questions they may have, or make any comments they may have regarding this, this topic. Mrs. Page?
Uh, thank you very much for your presentation. I read through your packet, and I was very impressed with what you have here. Could you clarify further as to how your business, how your business makes a profit, and then how that works back to the, the school committee? And then I have a question to follow that.
My business has a contract, or will have a contract if we go forward with the Cozy, as a consultant. So we do not make any profit on the rent. You know, our, my job, I am my business, there's not like tens of us out there. I am my business. Our job is to help Cozy achieve this goal. So there is a consulting contract to pay me for my hours. That's it.
I thought in one of the things that we saw, that you had a tentative, and maybe I'm wrong, outline of, that we probably wouldn't make anything in the first year. This would be something that we'd be looking at in the second year, in the third year. I don't see that before me today, but I thought that you gave something up before.
I can speak to that. In a conversation that I had with Doc, both Dr. Thornton and Ms. Jackson, I think we would like to present the committee and the community with the concept first, and if the, and see if there's support from the community and the committee with the concept. And the financial details and the financial arrangements would be, those details would be worked out between Ms. Jackson and Attorney Carroll in our business office and the superintendent. Superintendent would take that as a recommendation and present, present it to the committee for approval or, or amendment to his recommendation. But I think the, the, the presentation at this time is basically the concept. And obviously, the financial ramifications are the financial portion of it. Holds a lot of weight to the concept, but I, I think we need to decide where we're going from a concept perspective before we delve into those details. And I think we look to our attorney and our business office and superintendent for recommendations on the financial end of it, for this committee to approve or amend as they see fit. Ms., Mrs. Benson?
Thank you, Barbara, for such wonderful presentation. And to the members of the school committee, I've had the opportunity to work with Barbara in the state agencies, and she is very, very knowledgeable. As I told you, Dr. Thornton, when you sent out the paper, we can't pay her enough. But the one question that I'm interested in, you mentioned, Barbara, that we'd have a new cooperation. Now, are those the details that we're gonna have to work out? How the cooperation is formed? And where the school committee will, what part they will have? I understand cooperations and how people go about it. Because one thing in North Kingstown, I'm oldest town hall, and I've seen a lot of it go around, you have got to be able to solicit people from all quarters. And when I think of cooperation, I think of shares or something. And another thing that I checked, that was one, we talked about the, I like the fact that we are gonna be expanding the job base, Barbara. People in North Kingstown need jobs. And we will benefit indirectly from jobs, because jobs generate taxes. But the next thing, out of all that building, we mentioned about the food bank. But I didn't see anything related to the homeless. And that's a big problem in our town.
I could answer all those, I think. I'm not sure the order. Last one first, in terms of the homeless, if you could-
That's the most important one.
Picture DE in terms of the two wings in the main row, if you will, the main row of offices. One of the concepts, if you can, I see the map in your packet. The main hallways you come in, really, a lot of those spaces can be district components, if you will. Title I homelessness, Cozy, all kind of occupy, or could occupy those areas. We could definitely do something with homelessness in that wing. Second, in terms of cooperation, today's more of a helicopter view. It's to test your interest in the idea. If you like the idea, then we'll come back to it. Ms. Carroll, Strafer, Ms. Jackson, as far as what would it mean to do that? And what are you responsible for to agree? All those things. Today's more just helicopter view. What do you think of the idea?
Well, in reference to your answer, the idea is wonderful, but homeless wasn't mentioned, and I would like to see that inserted. That would be one thing that would need to be inserted. That the wings are there and insert that in as part of.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Welch?
Barbara, how much conversation have you had with the folks over at QDC?
The only conversation I had with the people at QDC, at the corporation itself, or the businesses in the park?
Both.
At the corporation itself, I asked Stephen King how frequently his room, that they allow businesses at, the room that would be competing with the digital space. How often was that booked? He told me that it was booked during the peak time that people would want to use it, which is Tuesday through Thursday during business hours, probably right now about twice a week by non-QDC, for non-QDC meetings. So that means if I'm unitax and I want to have a, a meeting there. Most of the businesses in that park have meeting rooms available within their corporate facility. So it's not, it's not a huge need. What he also told me was, the number of requests he had to turn down because they were not QDC tenants, which they did not keep a tab on, was significant, is the word he used. I also spoke to, to finish your, your answer. I also spoke to two of the tenants in the park who do training, but they do not do the type of training that we're talking about doing here. They're trades training, for example, the new trades training corporations there. They are interested in finding a facility close by that they can send their soon-to-be graduates to for auxiliary training. Like, for example, they train plumbers, they train electricians. If you choose to be an electrician or a plumber as an independent proprietor, you need to know how to do accounting, you need to know how to use QuickBooks. They don't teach that there. We can imagine that that might be part of their business success by coming here to learn those additional skills.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. I'm gonna work my way back this way. Mrs. Avanzano?
Yes, I want to say thank you very much for the presentation. As far as the concept goes, I, I like the concept very much. I think it's a positive thing to have, obviously, to have people in that building, because it is in the center of a neighborhood. And the residents really worry about it being just an empty shell. So I think this is a very positive thing to be looking at this. And I'll be looking at, as we go further, looking at some of the details in terms of, like, the liabilities, the costs, the things that will be talked about and worked out on a more detailed level. And just to make sure we retain our oversight. Oh, absolutely. And also, what you're requiring or requesting of us in terms of any payments that you are, are turning the building over, as you said, in usable condition. I'll be looking at that. And just one more quick question, in terms of what your thoughts are about the playgrounds. I'm just curious, since they're in the neighborhood, it would, how does that tie into the use?
The only thoughts that we have at the present moment is to make sure that we retain them. We would not be removing them. You know, maintenance is an issue. We're gonna have to figure out how to pay for that. There is no proposed thought of daycare in here. I mean, that's a whole different liability, and daycare and adult learning maybe is not such a swell idea. So, so, you know, the, the neighborhood would have access to those playgrounds?
That's my question.
Yeah, absolutely. We're not, the intention is not to remove them, but also, you know, they, playgrounds have to be safe, so the maintenance is an issue. We're gonna have to, I mean, it's part of the work we have to do.
And we retain the responsibility of oversight over that building by law, anyway. So we'll have to see how that works. But very excellent. I think it's a great idea, and a positive for the community.
These guys are pretty creative, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Avanzano, Mrs. Brunel?
Thank you very much. I know a lot of hard work went into this. And as a concept, I'm very interested in finding out more about this and how we can move forward with having something at Davisville L. I think it's important to have something there for the community and all. I also wanted to thank the Chair for his involvement. He had been very concerned about Davisville L from the get-go. And so, Larry, thank you for, you know, working. We've had other companies and other people come forward to us and query about this building. And some fell through, and some people are still asking about it. And it's a, it's a good opportunity to, to look at what we can do and what we should do for our community and for our people. And, and come along with what Linda was saying, and the playground, I just, an idea I had was- I had was that, and a lot of times in adult education, some people have a hard time going forward because they don't know what to do with their children. So, on the side, maybe if there was a room or something, just an idea designated to help with why the adults are doing their education, or something like that, that there might be-
Absolutely.
-a room for children and-
Oh, absolutely. I think that, I, the distinction I was trying to draw, so I'm glad you brought that up, is that we don't imagine competing with existing daycare businesses.
Right.
But we may provide childcare during learning.
Right. I think that would be, I mean, I mean, great. I mean, you're hearing about it all over the place.
Sure.
In corporations and businesses where they have the daycare right there, so that the families can stay together.
Right, absolutely. Yeah. But we, we have to also recognize our responsibility not to put other businesses out of business by this.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Brunel. What I would ask, I would ask the committee at this time, if there's no objection, we could ask Dr. Thornton and his team to continue to work with Ms. Jackson and develop a, a plan with further details, some of the questions and concerns that have been raised, obviously, including the finance, financial plans of this matter, and present it to the school committee with the recommendation at a future meeting. Mr. Welch?
Along with that idea, Larry, I would hope that maybe one or two of the committee members could be involved in that-
Absolutely.
-so that there is a give and take, back and forth-
Absolutely.
...between the, the group.
Thank you for volunteering your time.
I nominate you.
And I, thanks for volunteering, and I nominate you.
Mr. Cerici, I'd like to volunteer for that.
Absolutely. But, so if there are no objections from committee members, I would just suggest that we could proceed as I outlined. And does that work okay? And, and certainly, if there are members of the Davisville community or the community at large that want to provide some feedback or input, please do so, as I said tonight, by signing up at the signup sheet, or feel free to contact the superintendent or school committee members via telephone or email to provide us with some feedback and input on this concept as we proceed through this process, so.
Thank you very much.
Barbara, thank you very much, and we look forward to continuing to work with you on this.
I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're gonna be moving to citizens' comments. Mrs. Jarrell, could you please pass the signup sheet to me, please? Jim McGuinn?
Good evening. Jim McGuinn, 412 Chimney Rock. I think it was a, a good presentation. Was this the only facility that was considered? Because right now, we, the town has looked at excess facilities, which include the Brown Street Library, the town hall, trying to move all the town offices into Wickford L. We still don't know if Wickford L. will be completely full when that happens. And there's been a talk of having adult education there. There's been a talk of, you know, CAS and some of the other things there, and using the current town hall and the Brown Street Library, which is a beautiful building, right in the center of Wickford, as things like that. In fact, you and I previously, I think, a year and a half ago, talked about an incubator possibility at Wickford L. And this is very much along those, those lines. A little different, but, and, and I say that because there are excess buildings in town that once, and there's been a commitment by the town council and the school committee to move into Wickford L. Don't know how much space is gonna be left. There's a kitchen, there's an auditorium there. Some of the things that you're looking for, resources are there. They're also centrally located in town. But from a financial point of view, the Davisville property is actually assessed at more than the Wickford L. property. And if the town were allowed to sell that, and there was a, a presentation given December last year, to sell that and to continue making houses-
Excuse me, Mr. McGuinn? I just want to remind you that this portion of the agenda is reserved for citizens' comments to the committee.
Okay.
If you'd like to speak to Ms. Jackson afterwards-
Well, I'm speaking to everyone, but there was a presentation about putting houses in there, there's three road accesses. If this plan were to go ahead, I believe you would have to get a change of use for the building from the fire marshal. And I would question whether or not RIDE would continue to consider that a school building at that point. Also, the proceeds from that Davisville property would offset the bond for Wickford L. potentially to the tune of a million, $3 million. And, and the debt service on that offset would be somewhere between $100,000 and $240,000 a year, which means that's the, that's what you're up against as far as the financial target in making any money out of this, because the, the net cost to the town, what's the next net cost to the town? What's the impact on the neighborhood? I think this is a, a great plan. I think that it should be looked at as a plan for any of the other excess buildings in town, and look at what's the best for the town of North Kingstown, long and short term. And if there is a new school needed, we all know, it's not needed in the northern end of town, it's needed in the southern end of town. So, if we have to take additional bond monies to fix Wickford L., that's gonna be fewer bond dollars that are gonna be available for school in the southern end at some point. Thank you.
To answer the question I heard, Cozy dollars fund this. Cozy dollars are targeted for the school district and schools. We cannot authorize Ms. Jackson to, to work on town properties that are not under the school umbrella, so that's why our scope was Davisville Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Mr. Bill Mudge?
Bill Mudge, North Kingstown, San Antonio Baptist Road. First, I'd like to make a quick comment about your agenda. It's not in compliance with the open meetings access law. This agenda has not been posted on the, on our website, and as far as I'm concerned, it's not applicable for tonight's discussion. Okay? You will find that I'll give this to you people who, that, in fact, it is different than what was posted on the site and in the paper. I have some reservations on that, but I'll leave that for later. I would just like to say one thing about this, this project. I think it's a commendable idea to consider the things that you're doing. I wrote about this years ago with the old high school and so forth, so it's, it is commendable. But this project is very little about the education of kids in North Kingstown. It is 99% about helping our community, which is terrific. With that said, I believe it is responsibility of the school committee, excuse me, the town council, to weigh in and look at all the assets and be part of this. Although I applaud your, your, your concerns here, the fact that there is opportunities and finances that need to be considered, I think it's more appropriate that the, the town council look at that. With respect to an issue I tried to speak of, about Jamestown tuition and our budget, I'd just like to make one point. I'd like to ask every school committee member a question. Jamestown pays North Kingstown $10,000 a year, approximately, every year, to send an eighth grade student to North Kingstown as ten, as an eighth grade student. Given there's no discounts and everything else, if North Kingstown were to send a kindergarten student, or an eighth grade student, or a seventh grade student to Jamestown, does anybody have an idea on what we would pay without, without discount? Does anybody understand what Jamestown pays per student for K through eight people, kids, excuse me, $21,000 a year? So, when Jamestown comes over to us and twists our arm above additional funding and, and getting off the hook for not paying their fair share of interest rates, which is about $500 a student, is significant, to the tune of at least $150,000 on that issue alone. That's revenue coming in. And I'm appalled that the school committee has felt that it was not worthy enough to investigate that. However, those are the facts. And I, I would hope that, and I've tried to provide this information before to the school committee to review and analyze, and again, it was not done last year, so we won't, we lost at least $150,000. It wasn't done the year before, hasn't been done this year. So, you know, that's a quick $500,000 we've lost. When are we gonna take the appropriate action to look into this? That's my comment there. I do have one other comment.
Mr. Mudge?
Yeah?
About 30 seconds left. If you could please wrap up.
Yeah, that's okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
May I make a-
Very briefly, please.
Yeah, I just want to comment that I had responded to a letter sent by Mr. Mudge to the town council and the whole school committee with just my own opinion regarding the Jamestown tuition issue, and that each one of us, you know, discussed looking at the tuition when the contract expires, and that right now, we're nine years into a 10-year contract, and-
Mr. Mudge, this is, this is, you're, you're not gonna be allowed to speak again. You've had your opportunity for public comment.
Well, Mr. Avizzano?
Mr. Mudge, please take your seat. You've had your opportunity to comment. Thank you very much. Mrs. Avizzano, please finish your comments. Please be brief.
I'm being brief. Nine, we're nine years into a 10-year agreement, and the, in, in my opinion and in the opinion of actually our council, we would be violating a contract, even if that contract were technically illegal. Going to court with that, it would be something that you would lose, because we've performed nine years, the other side's performed nine years, and you can't just violate an agreement nine years in. Not that we would want to, anyway. So, that was my response to Mr. Mudge. We have taken all the information into account, we've considered it, and we'll be looking at it when the contract actually expires. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Avizzano. Mr. Richard Blaine, please.
Hi, I'm Richard Blaine. I live on Lake Drive, at the elementary school. And we've had a couple of questions. We were wondering why there was such a small group of people putting something like this together, and none of the neighbors were notified with the packet. Supposedly, there was a packet of information that none of us got, and I'm not, not quite sure what happened there. Also, I guess, I guess that covers in the zoning situation. If you're gonna run businesses at an elementary school, I don't know how you're gonna do that, but. Another thing, I would like to see if they're not gonna have the school open, that they remove the fences that they block the police cars from checking around the back of the school. Already, a couple times, there's been kids climbing on top of the school, and the police can't even get into the back of the school. And I'm not sure where all of you live, but you have to ask yourself, would you want this next year, house? Ask those questions to yourself. The rest of the neighborhood has to live in that neighborhood there. There's quite a few homes right next to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. As far as your, your comment with the fences, Dr. Thornton has made a note, and he'll look into that matter. Becky Blaine?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sam Salvati, I apologize if I, if I mispronounced it.
Salvati.
Salvati. I apologize.
Good evening. I live at 5 East Port, also right next to the elementary school. To follow some of the comments that preceded me, I do applaud your, your attention to this matter. Obviously, education is very important. Making the best utilization of the existing facilities is very important. There's a lot of potential within the town to make use of this facility, plus all the other vacant buildings. But again, my question would be, what was done to include the immediate neighbors in this discussion?
I just want to reiterate something that I had said prior to this onset of public comment. What you're seeing tonight, for the first time, is the first time that this committee has seen it as well. The only package of information that we have here and that we have received thus far is, is the hot copy of that PowerPoint presentation that was just presented. This is the first time we're seeing it as well. Have to understand, this is very, very ground floor stages. We, we are just looking at different opportunities and different potentials.
I can appreciate that.
There is, there is, there's nothing carved in stone. I mean, when I say we're at the infant stages of this, we're at, at the infant stages. And I think when there's some type of concept or plan where we kind of have more of a definitive direction, obviously, at that, at that time, I think we certainly intend on making this a transparent and inclusive plan and reaching out to the community. When we really have something to present, at this point, we're just looking at different options. We really don't have a plan to present at this point.
My second comment to that would be, I can appreciate what you're saying, but myself and the other neighbors directly around me weren't even aware of this meeting. So, how are you going to-
Wait, I mean, we, we advertise it in the newspaper, and we advertise it on the school district's website, certainly. I understand your concerns, and we'll address those concerns, and we'll make more of a concerted effort to, to reach out to the Davisville community and include the community as we continue to move through this process. That I can assure you of, and if that was a misstep on my part or on our, on our part, I'll accept responsibility for that, and I apologize. And we'll make a more concerted effort to have that inclusive and transparent relationship as we continue to work on this process, so.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
My main concern here would be what research was done to those immediate houses, those immediate properties that are adjacent to this facility? Property values, security, what kind of traffic is gonna be coming through this facility? Is it business hours? Is it after-hours? There's lots of kids in that neighborhood. And I know this is preliminary, but I think it's important to have all of that information when you're doing, you know, your proposals, and have the input of that community there that lives there every day.
Absolutely. Mrs. Brunel?
I just want to assure the community that my family is from that area. My mother-in-law still lives down the street, so I understand where your community, what they feel and everything like that, and we're not gonna be jumping into anything rash as it, it affects all our families, the whole family of North Kingstown. But, I mean, like, to say for me, that that's where my husband went to school, and our family is right next to the school, too. So, I understand what you're saying, and we will look closely into it.
As, as we said, this is, we're trying to provide opportunities, not only to the school district, but to the community as well, the Davisville community and the community at large. If this comes to a point where this is not something that has the, the support of the community, then obviously, we're not gonna move forward with it.
Can I make a suggestion?
We're not trying to force something into a community that a community doesn't want. And I, I think maybe as we move along in this process, we'll, we'll, we'll have a, a meeting with one agenda topic, and this will be the agenda topic, and we'll be a little more proactive in advertising to the Davisville community when that meeting's gonna be, and have a more detailed discussion on this topic when that information becomes available.
Absolutely.
I would also suggest you put your suggestions or concerns in writing and forward them to the school department. All the information is on our webpage, so that we have a list of the concerns in front of us that we can take into account.
And as I said in the onset, it's, this is very infant stages, and we, we encourage you and others to contact us and contact the administration with your feedback and input, as you're doing tonight.
Would you have plans to include the town council as things progress, or is this gonna be exclusively a school department issue?
I'm open, I'm open to any ideas and any discussions, but I just want to say that the care, custody, and control on the state law of this building belongs to the school district and the school committee, so.
We may need this facility as a school in short order, so we're not ready to turn-
I really, I don't want to really turn this into a discussion, and just remember, this is public comment, so I apologize. Okay. Anything else? Mel, one quick comment, please? I'm sorry.
I'll wait until he's finished. I have a question for the committee.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Walter Berry?
Walter Berry, 83 Brookside Drive. I'm another abutterer- I'm another abutter of the school I live. There are a couple of trees between me and the school, but that's about it. There's two reasons why I came here tonight. The first is to thank the school committee and the Cozy People and Barbara for looking at some of the possibilities of how to utilize the school. It's very important, obviously, to the neighborhood that that school not be abandoned, and we assume that that's not going to happen, but... So we appreciate the work that's going into looking at all of the possible alternatives. If the school can be used for something, obviously, that enriches the community, enriches the town, then that would be, that would really be great. The other thing I'd like to do is to offer the concerned citizens of Davisville as a point of contact. I'm one of the co-chairs. Eli Cupp is another one of the co-chairs, and we would like to offer to serve as a point of contact for some of the, some of the neighbors and for the neighborhood as a whole.
Absolutely. But before you leave this evening, if you could write down your contact information and pass it along to our school committee clerk, Mrs. Jarro right here, that would be greatly appreciated.
Right. Happy to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes citizens' comments. I'm sorry, Mrs. Benson?
I wanted to make the same comment that the gentleman made. I think we hear tonight what the neighborhood expect, and without going any further with any plans or putting any more on this, I think we should, what you just did, have the people to put their names down, and if they're not ready to commit tonight, have the attorneys send a letter to the Davisville Community Organization, asking them to forward names to them. Because I see this has got to be a cooperation between the community and the school department.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Mr. Burson, go ahead. Quick comment?
Sorry, I did not sign up. Jim Burson, forty-four Shady Cove Road. Wednesday's the start of school. My first grader will be coming here, my sixth grader will be going to Workford Middle. I am thrilled that they will be going to school on Wednesday. I say that because this is the time where you folks recently finished negotiating a union contract with the teachers, and in these contentious, potentially contentious times, tight financial times, it was not out of the realm of possibility that my kids would be home on Wednesday. So I want to just acknowledge the committee, in particular, the teachers' union, I'm not sure if any representatives are here, school administration, for, from what all public accounts, is a very taxpayer, teacher, community, parent, student-friendly agreement. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Burson. Okay, moving on, routine agenda items, correspondence. Do any committee members have correspondence to submit at this time? Okay. No correspondence this evening. I know I... Mrs. Benson?
I have some correspondence from a member of the Davisville community, and I would like to pass this on, that it be entered into the record, and it will enter into the record for the next thing that we, that this person sent the correspondence.
Mrs. Jarro, could you please copy that correspondence and put it in the committee members' next package on the correspondence, please?
And also include it in the minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. I know we had correspondence from Ms. Carroll, our attorney, that we needed to address this evening as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cerisi. In accordance with sixteen to twenty-one point six of the Rhode Island State laws, we are required upon ratification of a contract to provide a fiscal impact statement. And at this time, I'd like to give you the fiscal impact statement of the contract that was just ratified with the teachers. In fiscal year eleven, the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven school year, the increase over the present year's budget will be three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Now, that includes a freeze of wages, steps, and we were able to get a twenty percent copay. We were able to remove life insurance, and we were able to certainly decrease the amount of buyback on the health care. So the increase in the cost from last year to this year is three hundred and ten thousand. For fiscal year twelve, we have an increase which we are estimating at one million four hundred and thirty thousand. Now, that includes a one percent raise with steps, twenty percent copay on the health care, the removal of life insurance, and at this point, we are estimating a twelve percent increase in the health care costs. So that one point four million includes, includes an estimate by us, that health care is going to be going up twelve percent in the second year. In the third year, we're estimating an increase over the second year's budget of one point one, one million one hundred and seventy thousand. That includes a one percent raise with steps, again, the twenty percent copay on the health care, and the removal of the life insurance. We are again estimating that there would be an increase of twelve percent over the previous year's cost of Blue Cross. So our second and third year estimates that we're providing you tonight have an increase of twelve percent for Blue Cross already factored in. Now, as we have told you in the past, although we're telling you what the increase actually is, we're able to show that the budget, that the contract that we were able to negotiate with the teachers is at quite as cost savings to the district over what the past contract was, keeping in mind that in the past, our Blue Cross copay was quite a bit lower, and in terms of our buyback and our life insurance, those were also increases. So although we're showing a little bit over a million dollars in year two and three, if we had lived under the present year contract, that would be over three million dollars that we'd be showing. So we have had substantial savings over last year's contract to the one that we were able to negotiate. And again, that, I am providing you with that information in compliance with Rhode Island State law.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Moving on to disclosure of executive session votes, Mrs. Jarro, do we have any outstanding executive session votes to disclose at this time?
Yes, you do. All members who are present for tonight's executive session, except Douglas Roth. A motion unanimously passed to go into executive session. A motion unanimously passed to support the superintendent's recommendation to deny the grievance. A motion unanimously, I'm sorry, a motion passed to approve the sealed executive session minutes of August eleventh, four zero two, with April Brudell and Kimberly Page abstaining because they weren't present at that meeting. A motion unanimously passed to seal tonight's executive session minutes, and a motion unanimously passed to adjourn executive session and go into open.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarro. Before we move into the consent agenda, if there's no objection from committee members, what I'd like to do is skip down to agenda item four, under unfinished business approval of facilities master plan, which if you remember correctly, this was a discussion on our last committee agenda under unfinished business. We have members here tonight from the architecture firm S M M A, and members here this evening from our facilities management subcommittee. So if there's no objections from committee members, I'd like to move down to that agenda item. Prior to the start of that, we're going to take a quick two-minute recess to give them time to get set up. So we're going to take a two-minute recess at this time. Thank you.[1119.73]
I gave them a little hack out of it today.
Okay, we are back from recess and our next agenda item, as I said, is on the unfinished business approval of facilities master plan. At this time, I will turn it over to the representative from SMMA.
Hi, I'm Ed Fernet. I'm an architect and I'm the principal in charge of the project, the master plan for Ride Stage Two for your school district. Just a little explanation, Ride Stage Two, the state has better defined the process that you have to go through in order to get reimbursement for school projects. If you don't want reimbursement, of course, you can do whatever you want. But since reimbursement represents a significant percentage of the overall funding for a project, most people decide to go according to Ride regulations. And by the way, as a, as a, I don't know, am I an unbiased kind of observer, it's a good process. It's much more defined, much more deliberative than the former process. So Ride, the first stage, the school district itself analyzes its facilities and determines whether or not it has a need for anything to be done within those facilities. Stage Two provides further definition, much better cost estimates, further definition of all the aspects of that project. We've been now assisting the school district for about two months and we are very close to completing Ride Stage Two, which must begin to the state by the ninth of September. So as you can see, we're very close to being complete. It will be a rather extensive document. These are the aspects of Ride Stage Two that we've completed. Facility walk and assessment, administrative interviews is complete, capacity analysis. These are just short sentences. In fact, they represent a rather voluminous amount of work and analysis. For instance, capacity analysis means that we analyze every room in every school and determine according to the state guidelines what the capacity of that room is. Construction cost estimate is done by independent cost estimator and then vetted by our staff. And I, since I'm talking about that, I might also want to mention the fact that Sims, May &amp; McKee, which I'm a member of, is a full-service firm. We have not only architects but landscape architects, interior designers, civil structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, and voice data engineers. In other words, we have everybody under one roof and one authority, which is mine. Project definition, that's, we're very close to completing that. And let me come back to that. Project timeline is in process. That will be probably the last thing that gets completed as part of the report. And of course, everything is done in, with a consensus effort with school administration and the facilities committee. Going back to project definition, project definition, we have to analyze your entire facilities and come up with the real needs. Of course, in concert with, with the committee and, and administration. So that's, it's a very detailed sort of effort, but ultimately it produces a budget and that's a dollar amount. That's what goes into the state and they, they analyze it and determine whether or not it's valid. In most cases, certainly with all of the, the Ride Stage Two proposals that we've submitted, they've been approved. But you need to know that even though it's based on a very detailed analysis of your system, ultimately what's being approved is a dollar amount. So if every single item in that report is not implemented, as long as you stay within that dollar amount, you're meeting the terms of Ride Stage Two. There's some flexibility, not complete flexibility. For instance, if you designate in addition to a school and then you never build it, that doesn't work. But if it's square feet of tile, square feet of ceiling tile, square feet of floor tile, amount of painting, there is some flexibility in regards to exactly how much you do in order to support that, that number. With that, I'm going to have Keilia Wright, an associate in our firm, explain the detail of the report.
Thanks, Ed. Hello, everyone. So I'm going to start off by showing what the overall master plan is for the facilities in the North Kingston School District. This represents what could possibly be a 10-year plan. And as you can see at the bottom, it's a very large grand total of over $45 million. Now, what we've done is gone through these projected projects and broken them down based on different categories of work. The first category that we've delineated is code compliance, ADA accessibility, and asbestos abatement. This is your priority one work, issues that should be addressed as soon as possible. The next category is energy efficiency. This is work that if completed will potentially save the district's energy costs in terms of its operational costs. If you could. That blue box there highlights one item that I wanted to call out, and that is the wind turbine project study. This was a study that SMMA did not complete, but we have included in this master plan. The further details, I believe the, the school committee has access to and will probably be presenting at another time. But that item, I just wanted to call out. Asset protection refers to work that is aimed at preserving the integrity of the existing buildings. An easy example would be a new roof on a building if, if it were leaking, replacement of existing boilers, replacement of electrical components, et cetera. The next item is capital improvements and upgrades. This represents actual physical improvements that you could see to your building, not replacing existing items, but improving the condition of the building. Next. And then addition and major renovation. Major renovation would be different from capital improvements and upgrades in that it might change the very nature of the way a room is used, or it might add additional square footage onto an existing building. And this last category other, we had thrown in because you never know what's going to come up. And if there was something that didn't fit into the categories, obviously we didn't find anything that couldn't be categorized, so it's still there. Now, this next slide presents the short-term range of projects for this master plan. This would be in the next five years. And as you can see, the number is smaller. It's a little over 22 million. And then with the wind turbine project, it would be a little over 27 million. Now, the way this, these projects were chosen for the next five years, Ed, if you could, we took the priority one items. That would be your code compliance, your ADA accessibility, the items that really should be done immediately, and the asset protection items. And we made those the, the first priority to maintain the system that you currently have. In addition, one of the major additions renovations that we had proposed or looked at was the Wickford Middle School. And we'll, we'll go more into exactly what the details of that proposal would be. That's how we came up with the 22, I think it's 22.3 million. And then, of course, the 5 million for the wind turbine added on to that. If you could click once more. I think that was just an extra slide. So I show you these photos. They're just images of the, that our architects and engineers took, you can just scroll through the photos, of the existing conditions. This is just conditions that they had noted in their walkthroughs that would need to be addressed. Now, at Wickford Middle School, as you may or may not be familiar with, that is the oldest school building in the district. It was built in 1933. And as you can imagine, it does not necessarily meet all of the modern school needs. Just to start with an overview, if you could click one more time. So here we're looking at the site plan and a, a floor plan of the building. The existing building is a little over 63,000 square feet. We are proposing a addition of a little over 11,000 square feet and renovation of 36,000 square feet within the building. This addition would trigger some site work, approximately 16,000 square feet of new entrance drive and an entry plaza. So we're going to walk through what exactly would be housed in these renovated and added-on spaces. On the basement level, one of the things that we would look at doing is re-establishing the corridor connecting one side of the school to the other. Currently, the only way you can access one side of the building to the other is if you go up a set of stairs, walk through the cafeteria, and then go back down the set of stairs. In addition to that, there would be a proposed 2,000 square feet of industrial arts space. That would be to replace the space that is currently there. It is a substandard size. And also a new proposed flexibility space that could be classroom space, lab space. This was a space that during our capacity analysis, we determined would be really useful for the school. The school is above capacity. The rooms are much smaller than what the state currently recommends, even though the recommended student count per room is actually the same. So, for example, the state recommends that the average classroom size be 950 square feet and that there would be no more than 24 students in that room. In the case of Wickford Middle School, it's often about 700 to 800 square feet is the average size of the room, but the, still the same amount of students. This would be the ground floor. The kind of white blob at the end represents the, the new plaza. And the green would be a new main entry lobby of about 900 square feet. The blue represents administrative space, and that includes not only a main office, principal's office, but also file storage, guidance offices, conference rooms. That's approximately 2,000 square feet. And then classroom space of an additional 1,200 square feet. Now, on the top floor, we have the classroom lab space. This totals about 3,600 square feet, and this would represent four labs. The current science labs in Wickford Middle School do not have access to water or drainage. And those are two key things that modern middle school science rooms need. Dr. Thornton has explained on numerous occasions that the current middle school curriculum is kit-based, and that's an essential part of using those kits, is having drainage, having access to water for each of the students. This, this table represents, again, the, the programmatic breakdown of the addition and renovation, what we've just gone through. That would be the teaching lab space, the administrative space, instructional arts space, et cetera. So here we have the preferred alternative, and that is the wrong slide, so we can skip over that. And that would be the conclusion.
The purpose of tonight's meeting is even though this is a condensed schedule, the intent of the final report is to get input from the community, from the, from the school committee about, is this the right project? Is this the one that the voters are going to vote for? And consequently, now's the time to get that input. Nothing is sadder than to go forward and then have something like this voted down. So this is the definition that the facilities committee has brought forward to the school committee, and now this, this is the chance for input. And town council, of course, will also have a chance to weigh in on this. And then that will be the project that is submitted to the state for approval.
Thank you. At this point, what I'd like to do is give Dr. Thornton an opportunity to comment if he'd like, and committee members an opportunity for questions and comments, and then certainly members of our facilities maintenance subcommittee an opportunity to, for any questions or comments that they'd like to make.
Sure. Just some thoughts from our meeting last week with facilities sub and SMMA. I was quite encouraged by the dialogue we had over that, that evening in terms of trying to sharpen the project. And in the end, for me, my takeaway was some thinking we had around how this actually rolls out in the end, if you will. We had some conversation about the wind project and how that could, in essence, be almost a possible separate item or, or bond referendum, because some folks who might like wind might not have the interest in the actual facilities, maybe possibly separate that out. We also had some conversation about, you know, what really do we have to do? What are the must-dos? And we also knew, you know, we're cognizant of what's the threshold or town tolerance for a bond. But in the end, we really came back to, these things we're talking about are ADA, roofs, boilers. We're not adding, you know, new, or many new things here in this process. We also talked at length about how where the main dollar amount, maybe say 21 million, that's before you get the ride reimbursement. For those of you who don't know, we qualify for 40% reimbursement off the number. So 21% times .40, you get a return on the investment from the state. We also had a conversation about ESCOs, or in essence, we wondered, could some of the green projects, like the Davisville Middle School windows, which is around $700,000, could that, those kinds of projects be taken out of the conversation and get the number lower? So in the end, we had this kind of iteration. We actually, you know, thought it made sense to us. And that was, facilities sub, myself, Mr. Draper, Mr. Welch, Mr. Abazanos, we had that, you know, conversation over the course of, of last week. So that's kind of where I think we left in terms of trying to scope out the work, being aware of the tolerance of the town for a bond, but also knowing you can't defer maintenance forever. And some of these things really need to get done.
This is Abazano.
Well, I was very encouraged by the fact that, from conversations with Mr. Welsh and conversations with Ms. Page and other members of the committee at different times, that school committee members seem to be kind of working together or thinking the same way in that we need to really be careful when we put a bond out there in this kind of economic climate. It needs to be as lean. It needs to be as lean as possible, and it needs to be prioritized. We can't do all of the things that the architectural firm, which did a great job, by the way, with the different possibilities, but presented it as a menu that we need, that we could choose from. And I think that's what we really need to do, given the economic climate. And it seemed like our priorities were sort of matching up with one another. Wind was looked at as a big positive because it brings money back in, generating electricity, generating money back into our budget. And then, in terms of facilities, we all felt, and this is where facilities management has been just incredibly helpful to the school committee in guiding us a little bit and talking about their priorities being, you know, health, safety, and maintaining the building itself, and then also then, obviously, educational priorities. And it seemed like a lot of committee members felt that the gyms on the elementary schools were something that would need to wait in this economic climate, and that we needed to pay attention to both the code issues, where we're not in compliance with code, health and safety issues, and some attention to Wickford Middle, which everybody felt really needed. The building needs some attention, and the whole community has been saying that for a long time now. So I think we need to, you know, hone down to those options.
Mr. Welch?
I just want to reiterate some of the things that have been said by SMMA to make sure that the public really truly understands. The dollar amounts are large, to say the least, but they're gross dollars before reimbursement through state aid and/or possible grants down the line. And that's, that's very important to understand that. You're talking about fixing a problem that has been left to the wind, so to speak. We should be spending probably about $1 million a year in our capital improvement program, but we've been spending between $500,000 and $700,000 a year instead. It catches up with you. It's, same thing happens in your home when you don't fix the roof, you don't paint the house. It catches up with you, and something that would cost you a small amount of money just grows exponentially till you get to the point where it's doing damages and becomes really expensive. I remember Governor Alman one time saying about the Washington Bridge, "For the sake of spending $15,000 to seal the bridge deck on the Washington Bridge, we spent $8 million to fix it." And that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about monies that weren't spent and efforts that weren't done to fix problems and maintain them in good order. On the, on the plus side of things, let's talk about the wind turbine for a second. The Portsmouth Wind Turbine, which is smaller than the one that we're proposing, in the first 12 months of operation, produced over $550,000 worth of electric to the good side of the meter. In short order for them, that means that their wind turbine would be paid off in something in the order of six and a half years. That's a good project. Ours is a good project. It will produce approximately 30% more electricity than the unit that is in Portsmouth. It's a larger unit. When we do this plan, we will not only save monies that we have in our budget today in the capital improvement plan, which is a savings to the budget itself, we will also have energy savings which will go on year after year. The important thing about getting this approved and going forward is the time constraints on submitting this to RIDE, which is September 9th. And that's unfortunate that it's a short leash, and we're trying to get this in to satisfy the requirements of RIDE. There is a lot of work to be done after this time. The facilities management and planning subcommittee will be looking at every line item to make sure that we are getting and doing the right thing for the community in the short and long term. I don't believe that everything that's on this list will be done in the first five years. And I don't believe that we will be going out and spending all the money that we will be going for bond in the first five years. We'll only be taking what we can use in a certain amount of time and then doing that work and then moving on. So it isn't like we're going to go out and get a bond for $22 million and get that approval and go out and take the money and then go to work. We're not going to do that, folks. We're going to do 5, 8, $10 million in the first phase to get that work done. When that's done, we will be moving forward on the rest of this stuff. And this is a long-term process. We might not be able to go forward with actual construction work for a year and a half, two years, Ed?
Well, I think... Typically, you want to finish constructions, projects in time for opening of school in September. So almost invariably, on these types of projects, no matter what they are, the start of construction is based on the construction period with the, with the goal of ending construction and being off the site in time for the opening of school in September. So if, the soonest you would ever implement any one of these projects would be in time for the opening of school in '12, September of '12. So that would be the soonest that you'd have the addition added on to the middle school. And of course, any time thereafter, I mean, that's the schedule for school construction.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Anyone else have any comments? Mrs. Page?
Well, as we've been talking here, the numbers that were presented tonight are very large numbers, and that does not take into account the 40% reimbursement. The other thing that we need to remember, not only that we're under the deadlines, that we have a deadline of tomorrow as well as September 9th, but that the money that we had from the $9 million bond, basically, we don't have any more of that money coming in. And that was what we were using for a number, for maintenance at a number of our schools. So one of the things we have to look at in the future is, in our times of the lean budget, we don't have the money just to be able to spend on if a roof needs to be fixed or if the windows. And so while these all are projects that are expensive, it is something that we have to keep up with. If we want to keep our schools open, if we want to make sure that our students have a very livable place, it is one of those things of making sure we come to that balance of what is a good, good fit for the community, but at the same time keeps our schools so that they are in a good working order, that children like to go there and they learn. Because all the studies show the students do learn in environments where it's clean and things aren't broken. So it's the sort of thing of, we have to figure out what will be the magic number people will. But we do need to come with some number so that we are able to do all those repairs that are coming down the road.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Mrs. Bruno?
Yes, thank you again for the second half of this information as we try and formulate ideas as to our priorities and our priority list. For myself, I certainly support going forward with a bond. As to what this community is willing to vote for, I'm not exactly sure yet. I'd like to get more feedback on that. I would like to see something that would pass, instead of taking a chance like we did last time and we got nothing. So I am guessing that there would have to be some changes made to this. I would love everything that's on this list, first of all, and thank you very much for what you presented. It is what the community needs to do, but unfortunately, can we afford to take care of all those needs? And looking at your priority one work, you know, I could certainly see a lot of work being done to Wickford Middle School, but at the same time, I would look towards giving some guidance to the facility committee on toning down some of that. One of the things that we ran into a snag the last go-around was, we didn't have support of the teachers. And that is because the teachers at that time were not given an opportunity to say, you know, what it is that they need. And so somewhere, as we get this second part passed and we move forward in more detail, I would like to say have an opportunity where we make sure that we talk, you know, I know teachers have, you know, come to the beginning process, but the teachers are brought through the whole process. Because I really think that if they come and they support that at Wickford Middle School, we'll have a better chance of getting a bond passed. And we got the teachers behind us saying, absolutely, this is everything we need, and we have them come to the meetings, and then the community can see that. That's a big buy-in. That's a big tie to get the bond passed.
On that point, RIDE has just developed new regulations about two years ago. We were one of two firms which were first off the mark in order to start working with those new regulations. But we have a lot of experience. We've done over 70 schools, so we've been through the process, been through the drill. It's not our job to sell you a project. Our job is to identify what could be done, and what we're trying to find out from the community and the representatives of that community is what should be done. So what you've seen is actually a shorter list than what could be done. It's already down something less than that. So what we were hoping to get is what should be done based on the community's representatives of the definition of should. That said, everybody should be acutely aware of a couple of facts. One is, this is not going to pass unless town council, school committee, facilities committee, and school administration, and I would say teachers are, if they're not in favor of it. I would say overwhelmingly in favor of it. What does that mean? Doesn't have to be 100%, but it has, the closer you get to 100%, the better off you are. So as I stated earlier, this is a chance to, for the community's representatives to tell us what should be done. Because, you know, I, you know, from our point of view, a nice, long list with a big number, I suppose that sounds good and feeds into our best advantage, but it's of no advantage if it doesn't pass. So our goal is to get what should be done. If that's a lower number, so be it. That's what we should go forward with.
Thank you. Anyone else on the committee have any questions or comments before we move to facilities management subcommittee for their questions or comments? Mr. Welch?
I'd just add one other thing. With the interest rates today being as low as they are, it's a real incentive to try and, and do this now before the, the interest rates double as they could very easily. Thank you.
Mrs. Benson?
I just want to thank you for your report and the clarity in which you give it. And it's very easily understood, but I have one question. Tonight, you keep talking, you mentioned RIDE's deadline. The question I need, do we have to decide tonight whether we're going to put out a bond this year? Or do we have to decide what project we are working in? See, we've got two things hanging out here.
The question that we need to decide tonight is, what are we going to ask RIDE for in terms of, to go to bond for? As far as what you actually, what actually gets put on the ballot, that can be decided later on down the road. Is it going to be the wind turbine wrapped into the project? Is that going to be a separate question? But in terms of tonight, what we need to decide is, do we go forward with the $27 million with RIDE?
Thank you.
Mrs. Abazano?
Looking towards, looking to facilities management for their recommendation.
Yep. Definitely after the committee wraps up, we're going to move to facilities.
That's what we've been discussing over here.
I need to hear from them right away.
Yes, I'm reading on their recommendation.
Members from the facilities management subcommittee that'd like to comment at this time?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Grundy. First, I'd like to say that the original project that SMMA presented us with the $45 million price tag, when we went through it, there was nothing on there that wasn't both worthy and needed. It came down to what became the greatest priorities. We put the greatest priority on safety issues, health issues, code issues, preservation of town assets, and providing, with, with the Wickford Middle School, really, the biggest issue was a safety issue. One of the tours that we did of that school with its unique characteristics, we were in the building, walking around with students in the building with a, Mr. Cahoon from Facilities, for 20 minutes before anyone knew we were in the building. It lends itself to a very unsafe environment to have students in because of the multiple entrances, the fact that students sometimes leave doors propped open. So that was, that was the reason why that one big-ticket item is there.
That's for the kids that are all bunk in class so they can sneak back in later on.
They can get back in, yes. The other thing that's been said, especially by Mr. Welch, is that the $22 million number, which sounds huge, and it is a huge number, is before the 40% reimbursement. That number has the potential to be taken down lower by the use of ESCOs and possibly substantially, but because there is no ESCO contract in place at this point, it has to be included. There is a 42% escalation clause in there, which is, from all the research that I've been able to do, an acceptable number within the industry, but if you, if you watch construction numbers for the last few years and look at the forecasts for the next few, that's, that's a number that has quite a bit of potential for us to save on, and that has a big effect on the next number, which is the 20% projected fees that go on top of all the, the construction numbers. What we really looked at was what was an end number that the average homeowner could live with. And speaking, well, not speaking, but having Mr. Embry in the last meeting, with what we had, looking at the RIDE reimbursement before we even took things out for ESCOs, we were looking with today's bond numbers at under $100 per house on average. And that seemed to be about as reasonable as we could get it. The biggest concern is that some of these issues, if they're not addressed, are going to lead down, down the line to more expensive repairs. I think Mr. Welch also said that some of the repairs that are in there are things that would be in your operating budget because they become necessary repairs. So it's a way to work that in as well. The $45 million project would have been wonderful. It would have brought parity and equality to all the schools. We would have had some wonderful gyms. But as much as $22 million sounds like a lot, that really is the bare bones number. It's, it's close to a 45% reduction of everything that was identified. And I want to thank the members of the committee who put in a tremendous amount of time. We met noon time, we met 5 o'clock, we stayed some nights a little later than we probably should have, and SMMA for turning this around as quickly as they did. They, they really did do a fabulous job. One of the key things to keep in mind is that if the September 9th deadline is missed, we start over, which means that the Phase 1, which has already been approved, basically is tossed aside. All of the work that's going into the Phase 2 gets tossed aside, and we start from square one. So while it may seem that this is a bit of a rush process, there's been a tremendous amount of time, a tremendous amount of effort put in by, by both the committee, the subcommittee, the school committee, the staff, SMMA. And it's a shame that RIDE won't give us any type of extension, but we were told very clearly by Mr. De Silva that one day late means you start from square one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grundy. Anyone else from facilities subcommittee like to comment or ask any questions this evening? Okay. Dr. Thornton?
Just a closing thought on my end. I truly value the input of the subcommittee and Mr. Welch. All builders by trade, and these folks are the experts in the field, along with SMMA. So to me, this is the real number we need to move on, and I recommend the number as presented by, by the firm tonight.
What was that number again, please?
What's, action tonight is not to break it out, just the total number, correct?
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments from committee members? Mrs. Brunel?
Go over for me again, the wind turbine, how this fits into it and how it doesn't.
We talked in our meeting last week about how, when it comes down to actually having a vote in the public, some folks may have competing interests. Folks who want the wind might not want the buildings. If we broke them out, we may have a better chance to have both succeed in their own way, if you will. So we had theorized maybe breaking it out in two questions next year. In terms of the reimbursement, it's still a forty percent reimbursement. And last meeting, we had the company, had Dan Mendelson here talking about the viability of the wind, and we have a, a good wind resource. And as Mr. Welch said, there's a great potential to really get some savings with the windmill here.
And so I just sort of want to clarify that idea that what we're doing is we're presenting something to RIDE that RIDE will approve and reimburse us for, and then when it goes to a vote, you can split it and the community can just pick one or the other.
They could.
Or both.
Or both. It was, just to be clear, it's a long process. We have RIDE approval, we have Regents.
Yes.
We have, you know, a long road to go, but step one is you have to decide on the scope tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear how that process works so that everybody understands. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time?
I'll go after Ms. Anselmanna. Since she was at the meeting, she might can.
What I'd like to do is certainly, we can, we can, certainly, we can continue on with questions and comments and the discussion, but if there's no objections from the committee, what I'd like to do is get a motion on the table at this time before we proceed any further in the discussion. And I would ask if there's a motion to support the plan as presented this evening from SMA and if there's a motion. Mrs. Page?
Yeah, I'd make that motion. I'd make the motion to approve what SMA, I think they've done a very thorough job. I, I think the windmill will more than pay for itself in a few short years. So yes, I would go with the recommendation from the Facilities Management and SMA of the $27 million bond.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Page, seconded by Mrs. Benson and Mrs. Avizano. And as I said, if there's further discussion.
Before you continue with this motion, it's my understanding that in order to approve this piece, there's a $16,000 expense at this point that needs to be part of approving this piece.
We, when this, by the way, there's good things and bad things about being one of the first firms to address the new RIDE regulations. What we found out is typically, in order to explain why this is the case, is that in our first, East Greenwich was our first project under the new rigs, which is, we're opening the additions to the new high school next week. What we found out is that what's important is the definition of the project, and the fee has to be based on the definition of the project. Well, guess what? Tonight, we're defining what the project is, but I had to give a fee for the project two months ago. So rather than giving a big fee that at the time included four additions, I gave an à la carte fee, which broke down the basic study, and then if you do this addition, it's that much more, and if you do all four additions, it's X amount more. So that, so that I didn't, if you didn't do all four additions, you wouldn't have to pay for them. So that, that's the reason that there's the $16,000, because we didn't, another way of looking at it is there's three additions you're not buying, so.
But, but when the, the committee needs to understand, and that's why I wanted to make sure that they understood it upfront, when they approve this project tonight to go forward, part of the approval of that project is the fact that they are approving the expenditure of $16,000 between now and September ninth.
Right, which is already built into our contract, by the way, which has been signed and approved.
So again, they needed, that, you need to understand that. You're approving the project with the understanding that there's a $16,000 fee that will be expended between now and September ninth as it gets sent into RIDE.
Thank you for clarifying that for the committee, Ms. Carroll. Any other comments or questions before we call a question? Mrs. Page?
Mrs. Carroll, do I need to amend my motion?
I, I would, just so it's clear that that, that money is being expended.
Right. What I would ask is rather than, well, let's withdraw it.
I'll withdraw my motion and amend, or I will change my motion to say that my motion is to approve the recommendation by the Facilities Management Group and SMA with the contract fee included.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion's been made by Mrs. Page, seconded by Mrs. Avizano. Discussion. Mrs. Avizano?
Very briefly, I just want to say thank you again to the Facilities Management Subcommittee. We are really fortunate in this town to have volunteers like that, that are that dedicated to spend their personal time and weekends and evenings, and the pizza was good, but other than that, it was a lot of time spent. It's really appreciated.
Mrs. Benson?
My discussion is, did I understand you to say that the contract had already been signed? I'm talking to Mr. Sam.
Ed Fournette, yes. I believe we have a signed contract, Kilia, but at any rate, that's the contract we submitted to you, which you approved and was submitted back. And like I said, it was à la carte menu, so that if you didn't, if you didn't do all four additions, you didn't pay for all four additions. Ultimately, you elected to do one addition, so you're doing one-fourth of the added extras that were part of the contract.
I have another question for you. What portion of the contract has been paid for? Because I'm of the understanding that the sixteen, if it's a signed contract, why are we voting on it?
I don't honestly know if you need to, but I think it would be a prudent action now, since it's come up, to approve it as the motion does approve it. You know, I think we'd, we'd have to have people smarter than me determine whether or not it actually had to be approved.
Ned or Dr. Thornton, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we voted to appoint SMA as the, this is part of that process?
It is part of the process. As you recall, it was funded out of the CIP, and the motion is appropriate. It's very transparent and just, you know, a forthright about the process.
I'm not, I, you say it's that, and I will agree that the motion does put it in a better light.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Anyone else have any questions or comments before I call a question? Thank you. And just in closing again, I'd like to thank you for all your time and patience and the volunteers from the Facilities Management Subcommittee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the countless hours that you guys have put into this, the administration as well. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yes?
I might say that their work has only just begun, and if we can occasionally have some pizza for them, we might be able to keep their spirits up.
You volunteered for that Subcommittee earlier tonight, and you volunteered to buy pizza for the others. Thank you, Mr. Welch.
Just a magnanimous guy. What can I say?
Moving back to the agenda, we were on the consent, back to the consent agenda. Are there any exemptions? Well, actually, before we move into the consent agenda, I think we had some updates or corrections from the consent agenda on some research that Attorney Carroll was doing with our HR supervisor earlier this evening.
Are we going to, do you want the corrections now, or do you want to exempt that and go through them? I don't know what.
We can make the corrections now, because if the corrections are made, they may or may not be exempted, so.
Okay. All right. Under the appointment of certified staff, under 1A, that candidate should be at first step plus masters. And the reason for the change is because any experience he had was out of state, and we are not required to give credit for out-of-state service. So it's first step plus masters. Going to C, that candidate should also be on Step One because that candidate came from a private school, from the Valley School. That is a private school, and we are not required to give credit for private school service. Going to Item H, that candidate should also be at Step One because all of her experience was out of state, and we are not required to give steps for out-of-state service. On B and on E, I was not able to verify at this point the time subbing, so I cannot verify that that should be a Step Three or that E should be a Step Three. It appears that it is, but I can't tell you that I saw the record and I can verify that tonight. So, so if, when you, if and when you approve B and C, E, I'm asking that you approve it pending the, our ability to check steps. The others on this list have been verified at the step that they are being offered at.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Okay. What I would suggest to the committee is we could exempt B and E, and you could, a motion. Oh, let's do this. I'll ask first, are there any exemptions to the consent agenda before I make it confusing? Mrs. Avizano?
H, H.
Are there any other exemptions to the consent agenda at this time? Mr. Welch?
2A and B. And I have the same question for three through seven.
Any other exemptions at this time? Mrs. Benson?
Number C, homeschooling.
Any others at this time? Yeah, I'll, Mrs. Brunel?
Exempting the B and E that you were speaking of.
Thank you. Any other exemptions at this time? I don't believe there's really anything left to be exempted, but at this time, I'll entertain a motion to improve the non-exempted consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Item C, homeschooling. Mrs. Benson?
I would, I will ask again and again that we be apprised of the numbers. You made it very clear to me, Dr. Thornton, that people had a chance to do what they wanted to do with their children, and I agree with you. But to me, a large number of homeschooling, it's almost like a symptom for what we're looking at now when they talk about these various incoming diseases and whether we can get vaccinated. So maybe we should look at those things.
I think, I think Dr. Thornton has an update.
Okay, thank you. I'm through.
As of last meeting, I asked Dr. Roger to research that for tonight in case it came up, so I'll give it to Dr. Roger.
In the last.
Good, very good. I'm glad to see that.
In the last four years, we've ranged from sixty-six students who are homeschooled to seventy-seven last year. There were sixty-six, sixty-nine, sixty-nine, and seventy-seven. This year, right now, we're counting fifty-two students who are homeschooled, but the number is still early. We could still be hearing from potentially another twenty-five. That doesn't mean they will or they will not. So the most we anticipate would be the same number as last year, but it'd probably be less than that.
That's good. I'm glad to see the number going down.
Thank you.
One more question related to that, if I've given the time.
Sure.
You know, they say the money follows the student. How do we work that? We've never been, I've never understood that.
There's no funding for homeschool students. Homeschool students can get the benefit from the district in terms of using our library, taking a class here possibly, taking our state test, but there's no per pupil expenditure for homeschool students.
Okay, so we don't.
Charter school students, different conversation.
Okay, we don't count them in our enrollment from reimbursement from the state or anywhere.
And no state reimbursement for homeschool. Thank you.
That wasn't a question I asked. I asked you if we counted them in our enrollment.
Yes, enrollment counts every kind of child from, they're broken out in subcategories from, actually, we have Ms. Briggs in the back who does our enrollment. We count, we have reports I sign quarterly on homeschoolers, out-of-district placement, charter school.
That I know.
Pre-K, K-12. They count in some subgroup of our homes, of our reporting. We count every child.
But they don't go in on our financial reports, huh?
I'm not sure what that means.
They go in as homeschool students.
They're homeschool.
Oh, I'm sorry, you don't know what financial reports mean.
They go in, there, there's a category of homeschool students, so they're, they're reported as homeschool students. So they go on in on the report, but they go in on the report as students who are homeschooled.
And they're not on any kind of way of reimbursement for the language books, the science books, and those things that we supply them?
No, no reimbursements, no dollars associated with homeschooling. We help them, and homeschoolers are on the benefit, incidentally, from the district, but there's no budget line item saying homeschool students.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve agenda item C at this time?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Moving on to I, 1, B, and E, Mrs. Brunel, I think, Ms. Carroll, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would need a motion to approve these pending verification of the steps?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved.
Back in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Moving on to 2A and B, Mr. Welch?
My question on, on both of these, we're hiring people at Step Seven, which I didn't understand, but also is the Step Seven for both of these have two different hourly rates? Same department?
One is a food service worker and one is a cook. They have two different classifications.
We have separate classification for a cook versus a.
Yes, absolutely. A cook makes more money than somebody that just passes out the food.
Okay, so then my, my question is, we're hiring somebody in at a Step Seven?
It's, it's consistent with the ESP contract. These are, these are NK ESP positions, so they have to follow the contracts language for those employees.
Are they current employees?
Are they current employees or are they new hires? They're current employees. Okay.
Yeah, they've, they've been moving around because of retirements.
Okay. You don't know that from this. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion at this time?
So moved.
To approve.
Back in.
2A and B, motion by Mr. Welch, seconded by Mrs. Benson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Moving on to three through seven, I believe, was Mr. Welch?
Yeah, you know, it's, we have, we have these positions, but there's no dollars stated. All it just says is they're non-budgeted with no money attached.
I can speak to that. As you know, we talked last meeting about the increase in enrollment, also talked about the nature of school for the meetings, when we have to advertise. At this point in time, I wanted you to have some cognition of what we're looking at, knowing that next agenda, you'll see the names and the dollar amounts, but given the enrollments last week, week and a half ago, we did, I did authorize the increase of these FTEs. We have been interviewing, I'd be bringing folks to you for the next meeting, but given the agenda postings eight days ago, whenever it was, that's what I knew I was looking at.
Okay, well, I have two questions then along with this. First is, you know, as I look at these things, we constantly, we talk about the step level of the positions, but we never talk about, in conjunction with that, what the real cost of that employee is. It's, it's the step level plus the benefits.
Correct.
And, you know, I, I think that sends, to me, it's, it's not a good number, okay? And the other thing is that I'm concerned that we, we make every possible effort to hire Step One and Step Two and not, not higher than that. We need to, we need to change that.
I guess I can speak to that. Example, last month, we had over three hundred applicants for elementary jobs. Example, last month, we had over three hundred applicants for elementary jobs. In that process, you'll see some folks next meeting, some step one, step two. Tonight, you saw some different numbers. I've told the HR department, step one and two is the goal. If you get someone that's truly outstanding, that's a three or four, you must come to me for permission, and I go through that. I can tell you, I had a couple of candidates that were tremendous. I had two candidates that were internal, that subdied for over two years, were fully trained in AMES Web, common forms assessments, fully traded and ready to go. I can't pass on someone like that, so I truly would go to a step three to get someone like that. But the goal is one and two, and we have a lot of those. But we also have some twos, some threes, I'll grant you. Nurses, harder to come by. Currently have a hole in reading. Reading's very hard to come by, and right now, we're getting a retiree to pinch hit for us for a couple of weeks. I have a candidate coming in September, early September, finalist for reading. It really depends
If I could add something to the reading point, in many cases, a reading teacher is someone who has already been teaching and gets a reading as a master's degree, so it's almost impossible to find a level one or two on reading. It's usually about three or four at the minimum.
One more point to add. In terms of the budget book, just so you know, when we forecast the budget for positions that are new, Mr. Draper and I forecasted, on average, on average, a step two person, and on average, a $10,000 healthcare line, because we don't know if they're single or family plan, so we kind of split it and made it $10,000. On average, step two is our assumption. When we're all done and the dust settles, middle of September, we can tell you of our twenty-two or so new hires, we can tell you on average, it was a step 2.3, and the healthcare was X, but we have to kind of have that flexibility, I guess, I would say.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. So if I'm understanding the process correctly, tonight, you're asking the committee to approve, to authorize you to fill these positions, and then our next meeting will actually be approving the actual person and salary.
That would be the goal at this point, yes.
Is there a motion at this time?
So moved.
To approve agenda items three through seven?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Benson, seconded by Mrs. Avizano, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Moving to item eight, I believe was Mrs. Avizano.
Yes, regarding the notation on the agenda of private donations next to the names of some of the coaches, I want to improve this, but approve this, but with the understanding that the school committee will approve the funding and also be apprised of who the donor is, so I would ask in the future, the word private not appear on the agenda. I've said that, I said that last year, because I think it gives the impression that no one will know who the donor is. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve item H, eight.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Avizano to approve, seconded by Mrs. Brunel.
Can we have some discussion?
Sure. Discussion, Mr. Welch?
I asked before on the weight training coach, if in fact, he was certified in weight training, had some certification. I would like that answered.
I will get it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Mrs. Brunel, I'm sorry, I forgot your name for a second.
That's okay. In regards to step and how we go forward in the future with direction from this committee, I would like to have it placed on an agenda to have a dialogue, and for a vote as to how this committee will be giving directions to the superintendent in picking steps of teachers.
Mrs. Carroll, could you make a note of that for our next agenda, when we draft our next agenda? Okay, moving on to unfinished business. 4A has already been discussed and voted on. 4B, Dr. Thornton, any updates or actions required on behalf of the committee at this time for 4B?
No, not this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Welch?
Going back, if you would, to certified staff, you had a number of those were unbudgeted. Would you let this committee know how we're going to at a future day?
Yes, as I had mentioned last meeting, one of two avenues, fund balance is the first conversation. Second, we have still not heard definitively from the state if we will realize the federal money that was meant to come to districts for class size reduction. If it comes, it'd be that first, fund balance second. Still waiting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Benson?
I would just like to add to that. As Dr. Thornton said, that it's a great day in Rhode Island. We met the race to the top, and everything I've read on it, from the New York Times to the Miami Herald, they strictly emphasize that the money will be used for teachers. So we have a bright spot coming there, from race to the top. I'd just like to add that, and offer my congratulations, I think we should offer the congratulations to the commissioner and the members, governor, and all of those who participated, for them to continue to work for it, because it is, as the Providence Journal took headlines, it's a great day in Rhode Island.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson.
I'd second that. Could we send a letter?
Yes.
We can do so.
Make a motion.
We can, we can do so from a consensus.
Consensus.
Thank you. Moving forward, CIP existing bond, future bond, I think we covered that under the Facilities Master Plan Approval, that agenda item. Moving on to 4D, policies. Mrs. Page?
All right. The first policy we have in front of us today is JIBC, which is the Student Advisory Council. This is a second read for this policy. We first read it back in June, and so if we pass, if we pass this, we're a second read today, and it will also be passed as policy. This has gone through the principals over at the high school, and they had no objection to what was in here. They felt as if this was vague enough that it didn't constrain them to what the structure of the organization would be, but yet it gave them something more to be shooting for a, some sort of a student advisory council, to be making more decisions at the high school. So I would make a motion that we approve JIBC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. D2, Mrs. Page?
All right. The next one is JFAB. This is a mission of resident students. We actually approved this in, we, I'm sorry, we amended this one not too long ago, but then there were more amendments that needed to be made, and Dr. Thornton made some suggestions, as you will see on the page two, as to things that he saw needed changes, and so that's why it's before us today. So I'd make a motion that we approve the revised vision of JFAB.
So moved.
Discussion?
An motion made to approve by Mrs. Page, seconded by Mrs. Brunel. Discussion, Mr. Welch?
What is our policy on tuition? When do we get it?
What month do we get it?
In other words, I know how we get it from Jameson. That's by contract. You have somebody from out of district, non-resident. When do we collect the tuition? Mr. Draper?
I have to check to confirm. I know it'd at least be quarterly, because I know we had an issue last year with some quarterly bills that weren't paid.
So we don't have a policy?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, my suggestion would be that tuition is collected upfront, by the quarter, if you choose, but we shouldn't be delivering services and then have to go collect the money.
I would just, I support that concept. I would just kind of defer to Dr. Thornton and Mr. Draper as far as is that something that would, is practical for our operations?
And currently, I would tell you, we don't have any substantial problems getting tuitions from families. We are successful in our current process. I do understand the concept that we don't want to be chasing, chasing a four.
You're doing them a favor, and then you've got to go out of your way.
Is something that, Dr. Thornton, that you could
That's what you call community relations.
Dr. Thornton, is this something you could support or recommend, that we include some type of amended language in the policy to?
I think first, I have to look at, I think, just for me, a sense of, A, right now, how many folks do we have, and what's our current system? You know, I could probably come back to you next meeting with just a sense of how many we're talking about, how it works right now. I don't want to just say something off the cuff, I have to look at it.
Mrs. Srezi, can I ask that you table GFAB and GFABR? Because there are some things in the two that are totally not, that are not in, that are not consistent with state law, they're not clear, because there are exceptions of when you can leave a child who's a non-resident, and I don't really have a problem with JFAB, but when it, when it coordinates with GFABR, I think we need to clear up some of the language. So rather than have this discussion about when we get tuition, because we only had one kid last year in law, can we table both of these policies, just to make a little bit?
Mrs. Page, could I ask that you
I withdraw my motion.
Mrs. Page, just withdrawing a motion, and would you offer a motion to table this agenda item, and we'll send it to, back to Policy Subcommittee to review?
Sure, I'll do that. That motion is made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Moving on to, I think we're on D4?
Yes, this is ECF. This is the Energy Management Conservation and Sustainability Policy. This was something that the policy committee gave to Mr. Draper and he and Mr. Cahoon, updated this for the committee, and that's how you have, what you have here today. So I'd make a motion that we pass ECF.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Moving on to agenda item 4E, Community Representatives of School Committee, of the School Committee to Consolidation of Services Subcommittee. Mr. Welch is co-chair of that Subcommittee, representing the School Committee, so I know you wanted to speak to this agenda item, so I'll defer to you at this time for this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barron is in the audience, gentleman sitting in the rear of the audience. I have spoken with him earlier. I told him that in, I would like to have the opportunity to speak with him, to converse for fifteen, twenty minutes, just so we get an understanding of what the committee is and so forth. He agrees, he understands that, that I would like to have this table tonight, just with the idea in mind to get comfortable with him and make the recommendation to the committee, and he indicated that he didn't have a problem with that.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Is there a motion to table this, and we'll have it on our next committee meeting agenda?
One question.
Is there a motion to
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
I had a question.
We're going to have, we're going to have discussion before the vote.
Second.
An a motion to table, and have it on our next committee agenda, by Mr. Welch, seconded by Mrs. Avizano. Discussion, Mrs. Benson?
My question is moved now. It was related to tabling it and the effect it would have on something else, so I don't have a question. It's moved now, when he needs the opportunity to speak with the man.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. I just want to thank that gentleman for offering to volunteer his time, and have read the resume, have read the resume, and certainly highly qualified. So thank you for, thank you for submitting and offering to volunteer your time. I greatly appreciate that. Moving on to reports, special reports, enrollment, standing Subcommittee reports, ad hoc committee reports, I think there's some information and packages regarding those agenda items.
In terms of enrollment, we're still tracking it daily, still getting some students in different levels. No new additions for FTEs. The latest influx, some middle school. As you recall, last time I spoke to you, we were approximately sixty students up at the K-5 from last year. We're down in the forties, middle school. Now we're eating into that, getting more middle school students back. It's not forty less anymore, and high school's getting a few more. We're also doing a very thorough job of looking at residency, confirming that the students that do come here in fact reside here. That's always a challenge in Rhode Island with a lot of mobility, to make sure that folks go where they need to go.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Mr. Welch?
With that regard, I received a congratulations for the job that someone is doing, doing that, called one of our landlords on several people that moved in recently, to verify in fact that they were living there. So, pardons to the department, the people who are doing the job.
I would just say they're doing an outstanding job, and just very thorough, the whole process.
Great.
That's great. Under the agenda item five, reports, does anyone have any questions, comments, or information to provide from any Subcommittee's at this time? Mrs. Page?
Yeah, the Wellness Committee will be having their first meeting on the 29th, I'll have to make sure I get that over to you, Deb, of September, but the week before that, there is the Rhode Island Breakfast that is offered every year by the Rhode Island Kids First, and it's up at the Crown Plaza. They have it at 7:15 in the morning, and it's open to anyone. They do fill up, but if anyone would like that information, I'd be more than happy. I emailed it out to the Wellness Committee, but if any committee members would like to be, come along. It's always a very good breakfast of the year. They give awards to various schools for their use of fresh foods, and they always have a special time where they teach you how to do exercise in your seat, or exercise in a very small space, if you wanted to do that with kids who couldn't go outside for the day. So if anybody's interested, I'll make sure I email you the invitation.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. If there's no further comments or discussions at this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.